Let's call this meeting of the Huron City Council order, please. This is for November 24th, 2020. Please all stand for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Crawford?
Here.
Claus?
Here.
Tap?
You're muted.
Tap?
He's muted.
Monty, tap?
Monty, hit your little microphone.
You're muted, Monty. We'll come back to him. Artino?
Here.
Dyke?
Here.
You're muted, Joe.
I'm here.
I got you, Monty. Dyke?
Dyke is here.
Hardy? Haggy?
Here.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we excuse Mr. Hardy from the meeting with the intent that he'll join us if he's able.
Yes, any discussion on that motion? Please call the roll.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
Tap? Artino?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Haggy?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes for council work session of October 27th and for the regular council meeting in October 27th, 2020, please. Get a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of council work session October 27th and regular meeting of October 22nd, 27th, I'm sorry, as written.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? Please call the roll.
Claus?
Yes.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Haggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have any emails or any correspondence to read?
I do not.
Okay. Then the next on the agenda is, well, it's the tabled ordinance, 2020-17. We're not prepared to bring that off the table yet, right?
Correct.
All right. Do we need a motion to do anything with that at all?
No.
No, okay. Under new business end, next is ordinance number 2020-31.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor.
I make a motion that we waive the three reading rule and put ordinance 2020-31 on its first reading.
Discussion on that motion. Please call the roll.
Claus?
Yes.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Hardy? Oh, sorry, Haggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Schrader?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance number 2020-31. An ordinance establishing fund number 202, property maintenance fund, and declaring an emergency.
Claus?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to place ordinance 2020-31 on emergency.
Any discussion on that motion? Please call the roll.
Claus?
Yes.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Haggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
All right. Matt? Mr. Lasko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. And I'll, when I'm done, I'll defer to Sway's good if he has anything else to add. But what's before council is the creation of a new property maintenance fund as it relates to the property maintenance ordinance that was revamped several weeks ago by council. But this is a fund basically as it relates to the city stepping in to abate nuisances on private property, namely, the replacement and repair of sidewalks. So this would be a fund that would allow us to track assessment payments received by the city and ultimately expenses out as it relates to making those repairs or nuisance abatements. So with that, I defer to Mr. Sway's good if he has anything else additional he'd like to add.
Now, thinking, Matt, I don't have much more to add other than letting council know that there will be a transfer from the general fund, seed money, once we get an idea, when we get our first project, that how much that costs. So that'll probably take place either later this year or next year, depending on when the project will take place. But as Matt said, this is just to properly account for the activity of mainly the sidewalk inspection and repair program and any other program that's enforceable under the city code, such as grass cutting, another assessment that the city performs. So this fund will properly account for that for us to mainly administration, manage those programs, and keep a close eye on them.
Any discussion? Please call the roll and final adoption.
Claus?
Yes.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Haggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
All right, next on the agenda is ordinance number 2020-32.
Mr. Mayor, regarding ordinance, yeah, regarding ordinance 2020-32, I'd like to make a motion that the three reading rule be waived and it be placed on its first reading.
Any discussion on that motion? Call the roll.
Haggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number 2020-32. An ordinance amending ordinance number 2019-27, adopted December 10, 2019, to provide for additional appropriations from the general fund and other funding sources and an increase in estimated resources and further approving cash transfers between funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Haggy?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we designate ordinance 2020-32 as an emergency.
Discussion on the emergency measure? Please call the roll.
Haggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lasko?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll also, at the conclusion of my comments, defer to Mr. Sway's good on this as well. But under this appropriations measure, the city's looking to move funds from certain activities to other activities between accounts and between activities that should generally have zero effect on the city's budgetary status. And these are funds related to building permit revenue and payments to the township. Also, transfers as it relates to cares dollars and other transfers into other funds. So I defer to Mr. Sway's good to add a little bit additional layer of detail to that on behalf of council.
Yes, thank you, Matt. The, as Matt said, the supplemental appropriations and estimated resources in front of you are strictly due to the increased building permits that we received over the last few months. And therefore, with the contract with the township, those permit fees that come in do get remitted out to the township every month. So just asking for additional appropriations and estimated resources to properly budget and pay for those expenses. In addition, the coronavirus relief fund, no additional revenue there or expenses. It's just really moving budget around through, from other expenses to personnel services. And as you all probably know, it's mainly due to the last few months where the personnel services side, barrel side of expenses out of the coronavirus relief fund has been a lot more than we anticipated over the last few months. So we did have room to move budget from other expenses to personnel. And the net impact on those measures for budget and estimated resources is zero to the overall city budget. In addition to all that, there are a lot of cash transfers on this ordinance. And that's mainly due to some of the transfers for, to our budget stabilization fund for payroll that were not made during the year and some other capital transfers that were not made due to the pandemic. After review of and closing out October, that I, I'm confident that our operational funds have sufficient cash reserves at this point in the year and that we can confidently make these budgeted cash transfers without impacting essential city services for the rest of the year. So that's these transfers that you see on here. And in addition to that, there's also pension transfers and other debt service transfers, other necessary transfers that we've been making all year. So no additional budget on these transfers. This was all planned for this year, which is a good sign that we can make them at this point.
All right, any questions or discussion? Please call the roll for final adoption.
Haggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
All right, next is resolution 2020-77.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that resolution 2020-77, if place the three reading rule be waived and it be placed on its first reading.
Discussion on that motion? Please call the roll.
Haggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Schrader?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 2020-77. A resolution authorizing the city manager to make the annual premium payment to the public entities pool of Ohio for the policy period December 1, 2020, through November 30, 2021, in an amount not to exceed $73,574.
Mr. Lasko?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a request for authorization to pay the entirety of our insurance premium to public entities pool of Ohio for the policy year December 1, 2020, through the end of November 2021. As stated in the background, the policy amount is for $73,574. This is about a seven to seven and a half percent increase than the policy premium for the prior 12 months. That's due in part to just standard rate increases. Secondarily, the city has had new vehicle additions and property additions, which justify part of that policy increase. We do expect in 2021 to look for opportunities to shop that rate. We did not, excuse me, we did not feel it was advantageous this year as there are some active claims that are still outstanding that we expect to drop off. But we do expect to shop that rate, the 2022 rate in 2021. And Mr. Sway's good, I don't know if you'd like to add anything to that narrative?
Uh, no, thanks, Matt. I think you covered everything. Just wanted to let council know too is that on shopping the rate this year, it was advised from our insurance provider that we should stay with PEP until next year just because of the active claims that we have right now. So like Mr. Lasko said, it's, we look forward to hopefully next year being able to for our insurance. But that is all, thanks.
Any questions or discussion?
Yes, Corey or Matt, whoever's dealing with this, I mean, did they, did they mention the claim activity at all in the renewal conversation? Are we in any kind of jeopardy? Did we get significantly dinged for the claims or not really part of the conversation?
I can handle, Matt, if you want. There wasn't any specific mention to the reason for the rate increase being because of claims, if that's what you're asking. But I think that there was no mention of a specific claims either. Just the current active legal claims that we have is restricting us from being able to.
And PEP did, PEP did take rate across the board, but it wasn't 7%. So I didn't know if they gave you any justification for that percentage or not.
Uh, no, just for the additional auto additions and property, just for the past year.
Corey, we added the fire engine, which was a big item.
Yeah, that's a big one, okay.
And I know at the end of last year, adding the substation, I think we added the substation property and the new asset out of the substations last year. So I think that.
Right, and that would have been prorated. So this is the first time you're seeing the annual on that, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Please call the roll and final adoption.
Haggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Okay, next is ordinance number 2020-33.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Tap?
I'd like to make a motion that ordinance number 2020-33 be placed on its first reading and the three reading rule be waived.
Any discussion on that motion? Please call the roll.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Haggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Schrader?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number 2020-33. An ordinance providing consent for rehabilitation of the bridge on US 6 at SLM 18.1 over the Norfolk Southern Railroad.
Lasko?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is a request for consent to undertake certain construction activities on behalf of the Ohio Department of Transportation. They are looking to undertake rehabilitative work on the US 6 bridge over the Norfolk Southern Railroad. That work would include reconstruction of the bridge decking, also new walkways and railings on both sides. This project is slated to be completed in 2025. 100% of the cost of the work would be funded by ODOT. And if there is to be determined utility relocation, that would also be fully reimbursed by the Ohio Department of Transportation. So they're merely looking for consent to undertake this project in 2025 at no cost to them.
All right. Any questions or discussion? Please call the roll for final adoption.
We need this to be passed as an emergency measure.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Tap?
Mr. Tap?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion designated this as emerging matter, please.
Okay, discussion on that motion? Please call the roll on the motion to place as emergency.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Haggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
Okay, now we'll vote on the motion for the final adoption, please.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Haggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
All right, next is resolution number 2020-78.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that resolution number 2020-78 be placed on its first reading and the three reading rule be waived.
Discussion on that motion? Please call the roll.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Haggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Schrader?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution, excuse me, resolution number 2020-78. A resolution authorizing the city manager to make an annual premium payment to the Bureau of Workers' Compensation for the policy period January 1, 2021, through January 1, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $45,303.
Does this need to be passed as an emergency?
No, this is a resolution, we're good.
Oh, that's right, okay. All right, Mr. Lasko?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a request for authorization to pay the entirety Bureau of Workers' Compensation premium for 2021 in the amount of $45,303. This is a approximate 7% reduction from the current policy year. And we are looking to make payment as quick as possible. If that payment is made before January 1 of 2021, the city would be, it would be eligible for a 2% rebate of that premium. Mr. Sway's good, I don't know if there's anything else you would like to add to those notes?
Uh, the only other thing, just noting too, that's a 7% reduction from last year on the premium. And with our call last week with our comp management group that helps manage this, our program with BWC, they did note that, especially over the past few years, claims have been pretty low. Actually, in 2020, we're at zero claims right now. So we're expecting that hopefully with that historical performance that this premium should not go up, especially with how I think everyone kind of sees from the news that the BWC reserve is pretty healthy and they're giving out the dividends back to the employer. So the expectation is that we, we should not see much more of a, 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 or knock on wood here, but should not see a, much more of an increase on the BWC premiums going forward, especially with our history of our claims the last few years. So that's a good sign coming forward.
All right, any discussion or questions? Please call the roll for final adoption.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Haggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
All right, next is city manager discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good evening to everyone again. Did want to touch base on a few things in terms of updates for the council and the community as well. An update on US Route 6. As everyone has seen, that project is wrapping up, at least the first phase is wrapping up. The crosswalks are substantially complete, the catch basins are installed, the paving is substantially complete. The center islands have been constructed. The crews have been busy the last few days doing some striping. We did have a snap who were two, I'll call it, at the intersection of River Road and Route 6 and also Tiffin and Route 6, where those turn lanes were not striped. Crews were already out there today pulling that temporary paint off to make the adjustments to make sure those turn lanes were installed and will be installed. So that should be done momentarily. So appreciated ones patience with that and the crews jumped on that very quickly to eradicate that issue. Update on leaf pickup, which continues throughout the city. Crews are, as mentioned, working their way eastward to westward. They are nearly complete with their third trip through the city. There was a slight delay as we had a piece of equipment breakdown. But crews are nearly through that third round and will at least make a fourth trip through the city as well as they're done with the third trip. Also, an update on the Cleveland Road sidewalks, which I know was in front of council a few meetings ago for the city to step in and make those repairs to those cracked and damaged sidewalks. As of today, those repairs have been made. And the crews have been there seeding the landscaped areas and the tree lawn areas as well. So we're excited to see that project done very quickly. An update on transient rental legislation. I know that there's been a lot of work put in and a lot of work sessions that have been done between the community, staff, and council. Our legal team continues to make updates and alterations to the transient rental legislation that was already existing. They're also hard at work at working on draft overlay legislation so that we can hopefully have work sessions of council at the upcoming meetings. They do have provided me an initial draft, I believe yesterday, that I'm quickly reviewing. But my hope would be to have a work session if this council would like at the next meeting to review not only the transient rental amendments, but also draft overlay legislation. So I want to let the community know that we are working hard to get something in place that makes sense for the community. Also, an update on what used to be Winterfest, now Winter Day on May. Unfortunately, as we're seeing in a lot of communities, those events have had to be scaled back to ensure that we maintain social distancing and other guidelines that have been put in place by the health department, who's been tremendous during the planning processes. Unfortunately, we have had to cancel, most recently, the fireworks display that we had hoped to have, but that is now canceled. But Doug Steinwart and team are working feverishly to make sure that minimally we will have an activity where Santa will be driving through the community and interacting in a distanced way with families and children. And that is planned for December 5th, between the hours of roughly 11:00 and 1:00. And more details will come out as soon as we have them. But we still want to do something minimally for the community to maintain somewhat a sense of normalcy, albeit in a very safe manner. And then update on the budget process. Monday evening, the finance committee held their fifth and final meeting as relates to the budget process. The finance committee did make a recommendation for the draft budget as currently written to be presented to council. We are hoping for that to be at the first meeting in December. I do want to make a mention that we do need to have a public hearing. And we would ask council if they would consider having that public hearing at that first meeting in December related to the 2021 budget.
Do we, do we, do we need 30 days for that? No?
No, it's only seven days for this one.
Seven days for this one?
We're okay, so we will need a motion to set the public hearing for December 8.
All right, before we go on, will someone make that motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Claus?
I'll make a motion that we set the public hearing date.
for review, public review of the upcoming budget for two thousand twenty-one. And the date should be, Terry?
December eighth.
I'm sorry, December, December eighth.
At six thirty P.M.
Thirty P.M. during our regular council meeting.
All right, discussion on that motion? Please call the roll.
Claus?
Yes.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Lasko, I'm sorry, I wanted to get that out of the way before we got it.
No, that's okay. And I just wanted to end with, of course, certainly wishing staff, council, the community a happy and safe Thanksgiving coming up here in two days. And with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions from council.
Mr. Lasko, hi. I have some couple, couple questions following up on the striping. Was there any further discussion on those highlighting the sewer grates and the bike lanes? Have some concern and just in riding it myself one day that if you, for a car, that wouldn't, wouldn't be an issue, but for a bike, those are
Yes, are you, Mr. Mayor? It's Mr. Claus. Yes, that request and consideration has been shared with the contracting team to highlight those grates near the borders of the road. So we do anticipate that to happen as part of the striping project. We appreciate certainly bringing that to our attention. We think that's a very smart and prudent one to make. And secondarily, in relation to that, I know there was a request for temporary safety measures as it relates to the bases of the to be installed light poles. So we've also been in conversation with the contractors about temporary measures to cover those pedestals which currently have sort of bolts sticking up from the base. So contractors are aware and will undertake both of those measures.
Thank you. And one more quick question. I've had follow-up on the leaf pickup, which I think the the crews and the street department has been great. They've been moving through probably quicker than we thought with the new equipment that I've had a couple, multiple people mentioned that the only thing that kind of is bothersome for the public is that they don't know when the leaf machine is going to be where. And so you rake all your leaves over a weekend and you don't realize that the truck just went by Friday. So now it's two more weeks and then the leaves blow all over the place. I believe years ago, before they suspended the curbside program, they used to do that. And I'm wondering if we could put that challenge to the street department now that they've had a couple of years under their belt and they know kind of now how long it takes to get through certain areas. Maybe for next year, they could kind of try to schedule that as close as possible, at least by area, neighborhood, and people can have a little better feeling for where they're going to be. And would keep leaves from getting blown all over the, you know, all over towns. Well.
Yes, are you, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, I, that's a good recommendation. Obviously, we're nearing the end of this particular leaf season. But sort of just as a review of how things went this year, I'd be happy to have those conversations with Steve and his team about what we can do to make a schedule more predictable or a path through town more predictable for the public. Point's well taken, and I'll have those conversations with the streets team. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just have a couple of issues, Mr. Lasko. The fence at the showboat property lot one there, that needs some looking at. It's, it's pretty much bent over and stuff in some areas. And really in that same area where that placard is at, here's, I noticed a couple of I-beams that stick up out of the concrete. I know apparently they've been there for a while, but maybe we should address those. They would look to be like they'd be a tripping hazard.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Doug Steinwart had reached out to me last week as related to the fencing and looking at some alternative measures. So I know that's on their radar, but we'll also look into the other issue as well and come up with a recommendation to make those necessary changes.
Okay. Hopefully that, that'll all be remedied shortly, Mr. Schrader. All right, any other questions for, any other questions for the city manager? And that's all I had too. So other than I would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, stay safe. I hope that, Mr. Lasko, are most of our people all back now and doing well or?
Yeah, without getting into details, I know the county, well, obviously, the entire world is under duress at the moment, but we've had some spikes specifically in Erie County, particularly in some of our, you know, governmental entities. But we're, we're in good shape and everyone's generally back and healthy. So my hope is we've, we've made it through what will hopefully be the biggest of all the waves. Obviously, I think we need to hunker down this winter. There's a lot that's unexpected, but hopefully a vaccine's on the way. And I feel really good with where our staffing is after making it through what was some bit of a wave that ran through the county a couple of weeks ago.
All right, good. All right, like I said, happy Thanksgiving, everyone, stay safe. And next would be for the good of the order, Mr. Tap.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving, stay safe, stay healthy. I would also like to send our condolences out to, we lost a long time here in resident, Mr. Robert Bowers. Evening. He was a teacher for the Hereon City Schools, a coach, mentor, father to many people, and an avid fisherman, charter captain, and he will be dearly missed. But I just want to send our condolences to the Bowers family and we're thinking about them. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Peggy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Been a very difficult week for Huron. I would also like to express my condolences to the Bowers family and also to two other longtime prominent members of the community, Len Round and Judy Kilbury. Those of you who knew Len, he was Little League coach, he was a booster, always involved in everything going on around town and Mrs. Kilbury, just a, just a super person. And if you know their kids, then you know what a great person she was. So like to express my condolences to both the families, all three of the families. Also like to say kudos to the staff and the team, Route Six. I know it's been hard. I know it's been long and people are starting to get frustrated, but I thought it was a super job all the way around. Also, great job to the staff and team for dealing with all the COVID stuff you guys are dealing with. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Crawford?
I just have a couple of things. Um, Terry and staff were hard at work today planning normalcy for us. We've got a safety committee meeting coming up on December second at four, and there's also a utilities committee meeting, same day at five. So getting back into the groove on those two things. Matt, I know the chamber is still trying to put something together for what was Maine on whatever. I think she's come up with something called Home for the Holidays for a third try. Maybe check in with Amy just to see what all she's got going on, on that. I know she sent something out to chamber members.
Absolutely.
Lake Erie Shores and Islands Travel Guide. Amy's done a great job working with Jen Kilbury, actually, to lay out a full-page Huron spread. So we will actually have, Huron will have representation in that tourism guide next year. I saw the proof today and it looks super. So couple of years now where Huron's been missing from that publication, I'm, I'm really pleased that we're going to be back in that guide. And also wish everyone happy Thanksgiving, but I would be remiss if I also didn't congratulate the Huron Tiger volleyball team. Way to go ladies on your state championship. Dug it out at the end. They were hungry for it. So congratulations to those, particularly all those seniors in this topsy-turvy year. I, I think that had to do a world of good for those kids. Thanksgiving, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Claus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just re, kind of somewhat repeat, but I want to say happy Thanksgiving, healthy, safe to everybody. Also, pass long night condolences to the Kilbury, Round and Bowers families. They definitely will be sorely missed in the community. And thank everybody for their diligence through this, this last month or so and difficult time. I want to, you know, thank Cory and his staff for the great job with the budget. We just finished up our last financial, finance committee meetings yesterday. And we had a little struggle getting through the last couple of meetings with COVID, but those, that was always great in his, the, you know, preparation and everything of his team. And I think he's done, they've done a good job of Cory and Mike of getting Matt up to speed and it seems like Matt's very comfortable from the discussions we had li, last night with where the budget is. So we look forward to seeing that at our next, next meeting to vote on. That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Dyke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to give my condolences to the Kilbury, the Round, and also the Bowers family. All of you are correct. Those are longtime individuals that have done a lot for our community. They will be sorely missed. I'd also like to say congratulations to not only the volleyball team, but also all of the other fall athletic teams that participated and did tremendous jobs in the athletic fields that they were on during this COVID time. So again, congratulations to all of them. One other thing that I wanted to ask that we could potentially discuss and would be reducing the speed limit in R1 areas, for example, neighborhoods, Wexford. I've had individuals approach me where they feel that twenty-five miles an hour people is way too fast. We've also had some individuals reach out to us out in Wheeler Ave. I know in my neighborhood, I've had individuals to where twenty-five, my kids are always running around. As much as I yell at them, they still don't listen to me. So I wanted to see if that could be something discussed at the next safety committee meeting rather than twenty-five, and this would be all in R1 residential areas, excluding the R1 areas where like a state Route thirteen or a Route six would be. But this would be like, for example, the neighborhood. So I didn't know if we could discuss that in the safety meeting and see if there could be something done. So I know I had preliminary conversations with Mr. Lasko, but I wanted to formally bring it up at this meeting to have those talking points discussed. So I don't know what I need to do in order to make that happen, if you could guide me, anyone?
I think we can just add it to the agenda, can't we, Terry?
Yes, I will add it. I already made a note.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a great Thanksgiving, everyone.
All right, thanks, Joe. All right, something I, I'm sorry, I forgot to bring up. We've had some issues with some water shut off. I'd like to refer back to Mr. Lasko on that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we just wanted to talk through and see if council has a prerogative. There, back in March through May, thirty-first of two thousand twenty, council had passed a resolution waiving utility late fees, namely water late fees, and also putting a moratorium on water shut offs. That expired at the end of May. And the city reverted back to normal activities and normal processes during the last two quarters, namely as it relates to the July bills and most recently the October bills. We do know that we're heading into, again, a tough winter where there may be employers scaling back during a very difficult time of the year during the winter time. So we wanted to bring it to council's attention if there would be a desire to institute some potential moratorium once again on shut offs and waiving of late fees. I will let the council know that at the moment, we do have nine shut offs throughout the city. Some of those are transient rental or seasonal that were meant to be shut off. But we do believe there are four or five accounts that are shut off that are not. And we can't predict that those will increase in the future, but they may as we head into, again, an uncertain winter. So I think we want to just bring it up for discussion. And we're certainly happy to answer any questions, but we wanted to bring it to council's attention that that moratorium has expired. And we want to explore reinstituting some type of measures.
All right, I guess, go ahead.
Yeah, after discussion, I just kind of feel like it, we need to, I don't know if we can extend the moratorium. I kind of have an issue with having the water turned off during the holidays right now. And I think it's kind of flipped our mind that ended on May thirty-first. But yeah, I'm not sure if we have to make a motion or if we can just extend the moratorium that we had previously.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schrader?
Just a point of order to answer Mr. Tap's question. I think it would be appropriate if council so chooses to make a motion to amend that resolution from the floor and have it be extended until a date that council determines is appropriate. So a motion to amend the, that particular resolution, and I don't have the reference handy, but a motion to extend that and to set a new deadline would be appropriate. If council so chooses, I say.
Okay. Mr. Lasko, we, what we talked about maybe sometime in the like the second quarter of next year, the first quarter of next year, something?
Yes, but I would add, and Cory jumping in, if I next billing cycle is actually up in a day or two, those bills will be processed in December and those bills are due in early January. So the next round of potential shut offs would be in January as currently constituted. Obviously, then the next billing cycle after that would be due in April. So we'd look, if it's, if council so chooses, if we want to get through that January time period, we probably look to do something near the end of January. If we want to extend that through a second cycle, we want to look to probably extend that through the end of April. The other thing I would want to bring to council's attention that we need to address on the existing four or five accounts that are currently shut off as to whether we'd want to make a motion to turn those back on as part of this action. And then secondarily, if we're waiving late fees, what we're not doing is waiving the bill in its entirety. So we would want to make sure we have a plan in place so that people can reasonably pay those arrears over another bill or two or four, once we reinstitute or remove the moratorium. So those would be two things that we would need to address as well. Cory, I don't know if you'd like to add any more to that dialogue?
Yeah, Matt, the only thing I do want to suggest is instead of having the January as a deadline for the next billing cycle, I would suggest moving it out through March just because the shut offs will occur in February. The next billing cycle will start, it will be sent out at the end of March. So for the next billing cycle coming up, if we, if we do extend it, I would suggest going to the end of March on the shut offs and and the late fees, just to be safe. And the only thing I wanted to add to is if we do amend, and maybe this is a question for the law director, but if we do amend but if we do amend the former ordinance, would the city have to go back through the last two billing cycles and credit or refund any fees, late fees or anything waived in those previous cycles? That would just be a question I would have maybe for the legal team.
Mr. Mayor, may I reply?
Sure.
Mr. Swayzgood, I think that crediting would be appropriate, especially if the, if the body elects to amend that particular resolution. It would be appropriate to credit those that have been charged. And incidentally, as additional point, we don't have that resolution handy. What we could do for the time being is the city can elect to just stand by until our next meeting. And at that time, we can have that resolution before us and in a proper amendment to extend the deadline pursuant to what Mr. Swayzgood and Mr. Lasko are speaking of, and we can kind of round it all out at once, if that's the preference.
That makes sense to me.
What about the people that have their water shut off in the meantime?
Mr. Schrader, what can we do? Can we, can we go ahead and get those turned back on?
Yes, yes, especially if we're going to extend, yes. And credit, and credit the amounts for those that have been charged.
I guess, Mr. Lasko, we can, you can go ahead and take care of that and have those turned back on. I don't know if we need a motion to do that or how are we going to do that?
And just to make sure we're all on the same page, what I'm hearing is that we would look potentially for a motion tonight to turn on the accounts that have been shut off for non-payment. Not the accounts that have obviously been asked to be voluntarily turned off for seasonality reasons. And then we would come to council at the December 8th meeting for a formal resolution as it relates to the next one or two billing cycles, if I heard everything correctly.
Correct. Okay. Yeah, that, that sounds like that's what we want. We want a motion to turn on the accounts. And we'll wait till next week. And these are the accounts that are, are not, not the accounts that were due to vacations or whatever. Okay. How would you like that worded, Mr. Schrader?
It'd be a motion to restore water service to those customers that have been turned off since the expiration of the moratorium for non-payment.
All right, Mr. Tap, do you want to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we, whatever Mr. Schrader said.
So moved. All right.
Get the waters that were turned off, accounts turned off, turned back on for those that had them turned off.
All right, so the motion is to restore water service to customers that have been turned off just recently. Okay, any discussion on that motion? Please call the roll.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Haggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I forgot to bring that up earlier. Next thing is the administration has asked for an executive session. I don't believe we will have any type of action taken afterwards. So I'll need a motion to go an executive session for purpose of consultation with legal counsel regarding a pending or imminent court action.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel regarding pending or imminent.
Discussion?
Can we invite somebody? Do you need anybody in the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to invite Mr. Schrader.
Mr. Ebert?
Mr. Ebert? Mr.?
Lasko. Mr. Lasko. No, I, I don't think we're inviting Mr. Spafford.
Okay, Mr. Lasko.
Okay. All right. Okay, discussion on that motion. Please call the roll.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Haggy?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
Okay, we're back in regular session at 7:52. Any other discussion? With that, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Mr. Mayor?
Chris Crawford?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Discussion on the motion. Please call the roll.
Crawford?
Yes.
Claus?
Yes.
Tap?
Yes.
Artino?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Haggy?
Yes.
Okay, that's it. Motion to adjourn has been approved. Thanks, everyone, good night, and stay safe.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Good, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Good night.
Bye.